I don't be, uh, we do have a quorum. So if Pauline gets in afterwards, that would be fine too. So we'll just make, just note that. Okay. All right. We are ready. I'm calling the meeting to order of the planning commission meeting Thursday, August the 12th, 2021, 7:30 PM. And I would like to get identification of the current of the members present. And you can start in any way, any, any way you want to start. Anybody wants to start can start.
I'll start. Deirdre Daly, Secretary, Member.
Chris Cody, Member.
Peter Phyllis Chair. Okay, I just want to point out that we have some guests present tonight, which will not, will not participate in the meeting, obviously, but as you know, Planning Commission, all meetings are open to the public, but only public hearings are open to the people that applied for anything can speak.
Hi, Peter.
There, there is Pauline. Hello, Pauline. That's good.
Hi.
Okay, so Pauline is also present. I just want to point out that we have Larry Wagner and Michael Felton present, who will simply sit in to, they're interested in filling the, the current vacant position of, of an alternate. So they requested to sit in to get a, you know, get a feeling of how we run our meetings and see if they have continued interest after they listen to it for a while. And later on, they are on the agenda. We will, we will open that up later on in reference to that particular item. We also have here, obviously, Jim Conway and Kim Tester, Chair and Vice Chair of Zoning. And they are here specifically to assist us in responding to potential questions on the, on the change of, of the zoning regulations that we have on the agenda. Okay, so let me go on with our normal procedure. I would like to did you all read the, the minutes that we have?
Yes.
Are there any concerns, any questions or corrections?
Nope.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as, as written?
Motion to
I'll make a motion. Okay.
Oh, this is Chris Cody, motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and Pauline, are you, are you seconded?
I'm sec-, yes, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Now that takes us right to, to new business. And if I may just kick it off, I, I had a good, I had a chance of reading the entire, the entire zone change. Actually, we're, we're simply changing the entire regulation for section 310 of the zoning regulations. They've been rescinded and being replaced by what we had before us. And I just wanted to, we can go through step by step, but may I just ask the one question on the first sentence, where it says, expect as, except nonconformity, except as expressly permitted in these regulations. It is the genuine intent of these regulations that nonconformities shall not be expanded and that they shall be changed to conformity as quickly as the fair interest of the owners permit. And that the existence of a nonconformity shall not in itself be considered grounds for the issuance of a varigance for other properties. I, I have, I have a question. If, if we're not, if we don't allow to expand the nonconformity, what, what is, or what does it mean as quickly as the fair interest of the owner's permit? And is, and who makes determination what a fair interest is? Jim, maybe we can answer that for me.
I'm gonna have to refer this one to Kim. Kim worked with Gail extensively on this, and she might have a little more, a little more able to to define all that.
The rest, the rest of it is, you know, I could work my way through it. I just have a problem with the, with the ambiguity of, of that statement, so.
Kim, what do you, what's your take?
Yep, um, so this is an existing language that was in the regulation prior to this, and it was lower down in the, in the document. And so Gail and I agreed that should be an opening statement because ultimately, according to law, we end up having to state that nonconformity is something that will hopefully become conforming. So this was something that was required by the state and the legislature, and that's why it was in prior. So, you know, that's, you know, she, she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she had, we got to talk today. But that is kind of the crux of that statement.
Can I assume then that it is actually to protect the landowner that we can't deny someone applying for a change in the nonconformity or want, want to apply for creating something such as re-adaptive use on the property that they have, or whatever the case may be, that we have to take into consideration? And it would be at their, their interest to do that. Is that? That's probably, I'm sounding like, uh, like our attorney right now, but.
Yes, and I am not, so. So I can, I cannot answer in the way that I would, so.
Well, that's the only thing that tripped me off when I went through this, through this situation. Now, we can take this paragraph by paragraph, and if you want to, but it has anyone, anyone, of course.
I have an issue, Peter.
Okay, why don't, why don't we just go through for housekeeping rules? If anyone has an issue to make reference of any paragraph? And what, if there's a question, so please raise a question, and then we will, we will then respond. So we don't have, or you can raise a question to whomever is, for Jim or Kim, and then we can see if we can resolve this whole document in quick order, in quick order.
This is Pauline Krosick. I, I have a question. We don't know what the existing regulations are, so we don't know exactly what the changes are. Because normally, when we get something like this, we have what the existing regulation is and what the changes are going to be. But I don't see that anywhere in here. So I'm not sure what is changing.
Go ahead, Kim.
Yep, sure. Because this was a rewrite, Gail had told us that we did not have to submit the, you know, the, what we started with and what we ended with, because it was all different. The thing that I do want to say is that we have actually taken almost everything that was in the regulation and most cases, put it in a new location or expanded on the information to make it more clear. So if I can give you just, take a moment to go through kind of the history of that. When the proposed regulation that we denied, when the lawyers came with that, and we started rewriting that to make it a little more clear and doable, what we found was that our regulations were outdated and the language in it, according to Gail, needed updating. And so that's what got this started. And with the change that we were looking at to allow 25% enlargement of the nonconforming barns, what we realized was that we were already allowing it in these other dwellings. So like a dwelling, the business, commercial. And so what we decided to do, what I was organizing, was to make it more, more legible. And so ultimately, that's what took place.
But are there any, are there any changes? I know you're seeing, you're, you're fix, you fixed up the language so it's more up to date in, in how it's written, but are there, are there changes in the nonconformity and any part of this from what we, we agreed on, was it six or eight months ago?
Pauline, may, may I just interject for a moment? I, I know, I know, but this actually, I look at this as a complete new document, as a complete new regulation.
Exactly.
And the purview of, of planning, of course, is that we're responsible for the preparation, adoption, and implementation of the Plan of Conservation Development, and therefore, any referral to us would have to be reviewed from the point of view as to whether or not the document and the regulation complies with or is within the concept, within the context of our Plan of Conservation Development. And just reading it, I mean, the general heading of this is that there is more possibilities with this for adaptive use or for of, of barns and and to deal with the nonconformity in a way where the nonconformity gets protected. And you can only add to the footprint 25% of the original footprint in a direction that does not interfere with the nonconformity.
Okay, but that, does that, what about the other buildings in town that are not barns? Do they still need a, are they still going to need a permit to increase by 25%?
Yes, if, if they're not conforming, it, we already had it in the regulation that they would have to come before and get approval.
Okay, it doesn't, doesn't really spell that out in here.
And I think if you look at 3.10.6.3, that is not how it's interpreted. Because that says, nonconforming business or commercial buildings. So I guess that's, but, but I just want one, one thing that I wanted to comment on is that I understand if you're rewriting the whole thing, that's fine, but it would be nice to just see side by side what the changes are because, because by rewriting it, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to understand what's new and what was already pre-existing. That's just my, just my input. I'm just sharing my input.
Can I?
And I would have to agree. I mean, we usually get it in a certain format, and we just went through a very tedious P O C D, where people were very specific about what they wanted in the town. And I think, you know, continuity is what our town expects, and I think we should expect the same thing. If we're going to change any regulations, especially something that, I don't know, it just seems strange to me that we keep revisiting this issue.
Can I address this?
Yeah.
Thank you. This all started out back last fall, I believe it was November of last year, or even further back, where we allowed nonconforming houses to expand by 25%. Either away from the nonconformity or vertical in the back. And that was quite some time ago. And the basic change, and that was in 310, and the basic change this time is we're simply allowing nonconforming barns to have the same privilege as a nonconforming house by the same dimension, 25%. And hopefully, it would entice people to have, to look for an adaptive reuse for their barn. Hopefully to save some of the barns from demolition due to the fact that they just can't do anything with them. So the change, once Kim and Gail started looking into the change, they realized that when we wrote the, the amendment for a nonconforming house, we didn't really vet this out and look into all the little details in section 310. So the change, allowing nonconforming barns to have the same privilege as a nonconforming house, is basically the only change. But we did have to tweak it, move things around. There was things that were, just didn't make sense, and it's cleaned up. And we felt that if, when I talked with Karen, to submit the old reg and the new reg to simply, it would be very confusing because this, like Kim says, the stuff is still in there, just moved around. The change that everybody's asking, the amendment, the change in regulations is to allow nonconforming barns due to setback, just like a nonconforming house due to setback, to enlarge to possibly create an adaptive reuse.
May I make one reference to that, to that comment, if I may? The section on this new zoning, section 3.10.6.4, it makes reference to adaptive reuse of barns and historic barns. And I think the operative sentence here is that historic barns are changed from barn use to other permitted use within the relevant zone, whether throughout the building or part, a grant of special permit by the commission is required for the change in accordance with section 4.3.8 and 4.5 of the regulation, of the regulations for adaptive reuse of barns, not qualifying as a historic barn, but nonconforming as to setback. The commission may grant a special permit on application of the owner to allow the expanded nonconforming portion of the barn to be adaptively reused as finished space, providing, however, there shall be no bedrooms or kitchen facilities, no cooking or, or sleeping. So in other words, you can, you can convert or change the barn for a use that was previously the common use for that piece of property. And, but you can't make, you can't turn it into a, to a living space with kitchen facilities and bedroom facilities.
Correct.
Is that pretty much, is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Peter, if you, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you look at 3.10.6.3, that opens it up to existing nonconforming business and commercial buildings. It doesn't say anything about a barn in that section.
Right, right.
That, that's specific to, these, each thing is listed separately now. So under 3.10.6, each of those items are listed individually. So point one is the primary dwelling, point two is the nonconforming barn, point three is the business commercial, and then point four is the adaptive reuse. So it's all underneath that 3.10.6.
Are these, are these a category, are these a categories of, of the property, is that the, the whole regulation addresses?
Yes, and so.
Nonconforming structures, including buildings and lots, shall be definite, defined as set forth in section, and so on. And then three, all nonconforming building lots or use of land or buildings, it addresses that, and then it addresses the nonconforming buildings for a lot, a lot use, if once changed to conformity, shall be changed back, shall not be, shall be changed back so as to, as to violate the regulation at the time of the change.
Where are you? Sorry.
No, go ahead. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to follow the, the, I, I think what I understand is that we're talking about nonconforming use of not only barns, but also of other buildings and properties. And so each one.
I was gonna say, so, so I'll use my property as an example. So we have our main house, and then we have a rental house. And that, at one point, did house ducks. And I'm not kidding. I'm not making a joke of this. So are you saying it's a nonconforming, everything about our property is nonconforming? So if I wanted to increase that by 25%, I could do that based on these regulations. I'm just trying to understand.
Yes.
Right.
I think the answer is, yeah, incidentally, Christine, I have the same situation, although none of my stuff is nonconforming.
I was gonna say, yes, you have like the gatehouse, but.
Yeah, right, right. So, but I, but you're 100% correct. I think that's what that implies to me. If you would want, if you wanted to add on 25% of the current building size of your, of your rental property, you could do that as long as you would not increase the 25% to, to increase the nonconformity. You know, as long as you would, it would be in the back, or it would be horizontal, or it would be, you know, away from the nonconformity.
Correct.
So I have a question. Does this 10, 310, 6.3 allow, say, the market, the distillery, the garage, the antique shops? Does that allow each of them to, because each one is a little, it has a special situation. Can they each increase their footprint by 25% without a special permit?
I believe the pre-existing nonconforming businesses that Roxbury has, three of, the distillery is in the business zone. So that's not nonconforming. The distillery is in the business zone. They could increase.
Is it, so this is specific to the business zone?
No. This is specific to nonconforming barns. And I believe.
Oh, no, no, 6.3.
I don't think so, because this says business and commercial buildings.
Right.
Oh, that's 6.3. I believe, Kim, that was in there before.
Yeah, so the.
That's not a change.
No, that, that was just, we just moved it to a new.
That was, that was in there.
All right, so, oh, all right. I, I think that we need to just, again, it would be so much easier if we could look at it side by side. I.
I mean, I can tell you, I can tell you again, the change, one change in a lot of repositioning of words, but the one change is to include nonconforming barns along with all the rest of these nonconformities. But nonconforming barns was never included. Historic barns were allowed for adaptive reuse, but they were conforming historic barns. They were 100 feet from the road. We never, ever included nonconforming barns due to setback. And this only refers to front setback. This does not refer to side setbacks. A front setback only. We did not want to encroach upon a neighbor, so the front setback only deals with the road. And the only change, the only change other than repositioning and realignment of this amendment, this reg is we're allowing barns, nonconforming barns, to be reused.
Jim, I have one more question. Is there anything in the regulation, prior or current, that keeps someone from taking a barn, whether it's nonconforming or conforming, changing it for another purpose? And then bringing it back and forth?
A nonconforming barn can only be used for what it was built for or storage.
Okay.
So if you come in for, and ask for a permit to make a, a game room, a library, a home office, numerous things for a nonconforming barn, you couldn't do that before this. You can't do it now. This allows you to reuse it and add on 25% to make it a little bit more inviting to reuse.
Okay, and there's, is there any way someone in the future can then say, okay, I want another 25%?
No.
Of that 100.
Let's find that out in here. That's, that's part of it. I forget which section it is, but.
One-time change.
It's the same as the house. It's the same as the house. When you find, a year and a half ago, when we allowed 25% to a nonconforming house, it's a one-time thing. You can do 12% and you can come back 12 and a half percent, and you can come back a year later and do another 12 and a half percent. But the max is 25% of the footprint, whether it's all at once or in two or three pieces.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and Peter, just just to reiterate, what is our role in this? I mean, because this is normally a zoning.
Yeah, let, let me, let me, let me do this again. This is, this is a referral to us. And let me read the exact purview that the Planning Commission has. The Planning Commission was created in 1961 and is responsible for adopting and amending subdivision regulations, preparing, adopting, implementing a plan of conservation development, and reviewing and acting upon referrals from federal, state, and regional agencies. That includes also other, from the zoning department, for example. Those referrals come to us, and our purview is simply to make sure that it is not inconsistent with what we have worked on to come up with this 10-year plan of conservation plan that we, we just adopted back in the last year, October. So from this perspective, I mean, from, from my perspective, and this is my personal observation, and don't expect anybody to agree with that, but I just see this as just in addition of all the properties that we had before regulated for nonconformity. We simply added the barns to it, because they ran that as part of the a nonconforming concept. Jim, is that pretty much right?
That's correct. The, the one structure left out of all this, when we decided to look into nonconformities buildings, the one that was left out was barns, nonconforming barns. And really, at the time, we were focused on housing for, to allow people to do a slight bump out. You couldn't even add a spare room because it wasn't allowed until we changed that to where you can go. And now with, we never included nonconforming barns. A conforming barn, you could do anything you want with. It's conforming, so you can adapt that. But a nonconforming barn, we never allowed that, and that's what we're doing now. We're just trying to encourage people to have the ability to reuse their nonconforming barn, so they don't have to think about taking it down.
Can I, so, so, so how, I'm just trying to understand this. So we did the reg change eight months ago, whatever it was. So like, so Calder barns, those are right on the road. How were they not considered conforming or nonconforming? Like, were they not? I'm just trying to understand the difference between the barns and what's going on. Because they increased, didn't they increase, or no?
They had a variance from the zoning board of appeals, eight years ago. Eight years ago, they got a variance to put that barn back. It's two feet from the road.
Yeah, I know. It's right there, so.
And it was, it was meant to be put back for agricultural use. The use wasn't, at the time, the variance was not supposed to change because nonconformities couldn't change, but you could put it back. And they put it back with what they said was going to be agricultural use.
Okay.
And they mentioned Calder, Calder barns, you just go up the road, you know the area on the corner of Cross Brook and Painter Hill. I believe Calder owns those two barns. And each one is nonconforming. They're actually nonconforming on two roads. They're nonconforming front setback on Painter Hill, and they're also, each one is nonconforming on Cross Brook, the dirt road. So you will see written in here that that particular barn, the 25% expansion can only be vertical. It cannot go back.
And I want to.
So that's what the, the new reg says? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kim.
That's right. I just want to add, just, there was a sentence missing, and that has been added. And I wanted you to be aware of that, because Jim Bruce brought that up, so that, and it's in 310.7.1. Okay, so he just referred to, if a roof expansion, the portion of the roof vertically expanded shall not exceed 25% of the particular primary roof surface for which the vertical expansion applies. Okay, so on the side. And so that, I know, it's a mouthful. The, the sentence that's missing, that's now in there, is the vertical expansion must also back away from nonconformity. Just to clarify, that someone who wants to go up vertically can only do it on the side that is away from the nonconformity. And that was missing. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I have one more question. If, if, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, Deidre.
Oh, I was just, this is, and I was just gonna say, is, is it possible to pull up the existing reg? Julie, do you have that available? I, I just, I don't know. It would be so much easier.
It's, it's gonna find it very difficult. You're more than welcome to see the existing reg, but this is such a complete rewrite.
It's on the website, though. You can, actually.
Stuff is there. It's just moved, and Gail took one look at what we had, and it wouldn't allow, and it really didn't allow what we all approved for the houses back a year and a half ago. There was stuff that needed to be changed then, and we, we didn't catch. There was stuff that needed to be changed then and we, um, we didn't catch it.
So Peter, you mentioned thi- this situation, I think you said Calder. I'm not familiar with them or their property. But when people do ask or have in the past and they've expanded um under the guise of doing something for, say, agricultural, right? It's a barn. There, it's under the guise of doing something agriculturally, and then they use it for something different. What happens then? I mean, you fill out the, the permits, I would imagine. You, you actually sign off that you're gonna do something and then you don't do that.
Correct, and that's where enforcement steps in. Um, I understand we have like three years to step in and take them to task. Um, we didn't, this variance for the Calder was eight years ago and it was given by the ZVA for agricultural use. When they came in for the zoning permit, they said they were going to bottle um apple cider vinegar. Uh, at the time, we said, okay, agriculture, they're gonna put an orchard in. And then things all started slowly, slowly changing. And uh, I totally agree, we should go to them and say, okay, you know, where's the ag- agricultural use? Um, this happens quite a bit.
Okay.
I think with, with this, this may have improved the possibility of doing something along those lines. I think there's some more enforcement possibility occurring with having the regulation change. I have one question, though, that's not related to that.
Okay.
It makes reference adaptive reuse and section three, ten, six point four. It makes reference to adaptive reuse for barns and historic barns. So there's a dis- a distinction between barns and historic barns, not necessarily uh the, the overall action is or references that we're talking about uh properties that um, that are in uh that are non-conforming. Right, there still is a, the use of a historic barn versus a barn is still controlled more clearly, I mean a, a historic barn.
Right.
If it's, if it's, if it's conforming. Essentially, could that be done, could a read, read that diffuse be done and just turn it into a single-family home, which I think I've seen, which is, it's been, has been done, correct? If it is conforming.
Yes, if it's conforming, yes.
Okay, so that, that's, that's on a historic barn.
And now, well, let me just interject one thing. Any non-conforming barn is historic.
Okay.
The definition of a historic barn is pre-nineteen sixty. The regulations with front setback, I believe, went into effect um after, you know, so anything built within the fifty-foot front setback is gonna, was built before nineteen sixty.
Hmm.
So a non-conforming barn would essentially as well be historic. It's a historic non-conforming barn.
Okay, so the, the non-conformity, obviously, on, on historic barns is that they were built right, like, right next to a dirt road, so the accessibility to the barn was easier for the uh.
I was gonna say, yeah, were there, were there zoning regs back then, or did they just put up a building where they wanted it?
They just put it up. A lot of barns in Roxbury are on the edge of the road due to the fact of winter time, snow, they didn't want to have to plow and shovel to get to the barn, so they, they built them as close to the road as they could get. And there's a lot of them. Um, a lot of these barns, and the other thing you look into uh are the non-conforming barn parallel with the road? So the majority is non-conforming. I know barns, I have one on where my farm. It's perpendicular to the road. It's eighty foot, eighty feet long, but perpendicular and only ten feet of it's non-conforming. The other seventy is actually not a conforming structure, barn. So what we've allowed was the conforming portion of that non-conforming barn. Now the conforming portion can be used.
So that's, that's actually the reg that we changed last year, right? If I'm not mistaken?
Yes, that is the one you changed. And that's in here as well, all the non-conformities are in this section now.
Has zoning already approved this, or you're gonna meet?
No, zoning has basically approved this language and the reg. And we, we're sending it to public hearing and it's going to public hearing on September twentieth.
Right.
And everything we do comes to you folks. And you could give it your blessing, or you cannot give it your blessing. Either way, it still goes to public hearing.
But he- here's the point that I made earlier. Our purview is simply to make sure that amendments in those areas do tie into or are being referenced or were referenced in our plan of conservation development. There's no interference with that. So essentially, the regulations on zoning are being written and being approved by legal counsel uh to be sure that they meet the uh consti- but they meet the uh regulatory requirements. And that has been done in this case. Um that's pretty much what we have here. We have, we have a new regulation that seems to have incorporated a lot more than the old one did. And has made it more specific in terms of what you can or cannot do with uh barns, historic barns, et cetera, non-conforming buildings. Including regular non-conforming buildings, like a single-family residence, for example, that's non-conforming. That also addresses that in, in this particular regulation.
That was addressed two years, three years ago as well, and it passed and approved. We've had that one in effect for a couple of years.
Right.
The, the non-conforming houses, we changed that a few years back, and then we threw in that little uh addition to the con- conforming portion of non-conforming barns. And now we're throwing this in um to allow the expansion. When we did, when we, you guys looked at the one six months ago, that didn't allow for expansion. And now we're allowing for expansion just to encourage and entice people to save some of these barns.
And we felt really that it was fair. It was more fair for um across the board to have buildings uh treated more equally. Um, one of the things that I found interesting was the town attorney um has been very um positive in the way in which Roxbury has gone forward to um create these regulations for barns and historic barns, because she has told us that we are far, Roxbury is far ahead of many other towns in trying to save them. So that's, that's really been a great positive for us.
I think I, I, you know, while I still would love to see the old rag next to the new. I think it's great that now our businesses have opportunities to expand, because I know that Wayne's wanted to expand the market and the garage has wanted to expand, so if that allows for that, that's, that's excellent.
Well, this is, that regulation has been in, in existence for years.
Yeah.
That is not an addition, that's, that's been there.
That's been there.
Uh, but that was with special permit, and now they don't need that. It does not say they need a special permit for that in here.
That was.
Unless I'm reading it incorrectly, but I don't see anything about special permit here.
I think it makes reference to special permit, not, not for that, for the, for the commercial properties. It makes reference to the other properties.
Uh, can you tell me where that says that then? Cause I don't, I've read it a couple of times and I don't see it.
I did too, I did too and didn't see it.
Let's see. Well, let me ask you the question, since, since that particular thing has been in existence for a long time, as in reference to these commercial.
Actually, I think it's on the very last line of three, three, ten, seven point three. If that's meant to tie in everything in section three, ten, seven. Is that correct? Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. Jim, maybe?
Where?
The, the very last line of three, ten, seven point three. Yes, yes.
I don't.
It's just.
It says shall be submitted together with an application for special permit.
Permit.
So does that, that assumably is for uh three, three, ten, I guess, seven through.
Yes.
I believe, three, ten, seven point three and three, ten point six. As qualified in section three, ten point seven. And then it makes reference to it again, as you pointed out, the last sentence, uh to exercise this right. A zoning enforcement officer or commission may require a two-scale plot plan or class A to ser- a zoning location survey prepared by licensed land surveyor showing at a minimum the existing and proposed footprint property lines and zoning setback lines and/or architectural plans, including building elevation shall be submitted together with an application for a special permit. So.
Yes.
That's just the A two zone, that's just an A two survey, right? That's not a special permit application.
No, but it, you have to submit it in order to get a special permit. That's what it says in the last sentence, so. So, but it implies that you need a special permit to get that done.
It says may require, so no.
May require, well.
Two survey is not necessarily required, but it may be required.
It's at the.
So the special permit may not be required, or are you saying the A two survey?
The special permit is required and the um, the A two survey.
Is a discretionary choice between the CEO, uh the enforcement officer or the commission. It can be waived. As like many other regs we have, we can waive the A two, but this, it's all by special permit.
Yeah, keep, keep in mind what I would think.
Uh, I'm sorry, Peter, go ahead.
No, may I just add that? Let's keep in mind that if there's any indication that the property may be too close to the property line, an H two survey would probably be required by the zoning commission, I would imagine that would happen. And H two survey is the, the most accurate survey that we can actually receive in all of our uh activities, so.
Yes, and also, let me, let me remind everyone again, this only deals with front setbacks which only deals with highways and roads. This regulation doesn't apply to a, a barn in a side setback. If you had a barn in a side setback with your neighbor, you can't do any of this. Side setback aren't allowed.
Why we're, so I'm just curious why those were left out, because if we're trying to preserve.
I can explain.
Barns.
Yep, okay, uh side setback, basically that barn can be on the property line. The, the wall of the barn could be on the property line. Okay, your neighbor's house, if it was built after zoning, has a thirty-foot side setback. So you have thirty feet from the wall of that barn. And we did not want to give someone permission to adaptive reuse that barn into a game room. Um, music playing, and it's thirty feet from your neighbor's house.
Yeah.
Versus a front setback, which is on the edge of the road.
But, but we have a lot of house, but we have a lot of houses that are right on the road. Mine is a prime example. So, so you'll let one barn be two feet from the road, but their neighbor might be right across the road. But you won't allow it on another side.
The barn is two feet from the road, the road is twenty feet. Your neighbor's house is fifty feet from the road, so your neighbor's house is seventy feet from the barn in question.
Right.
I think, let's, let's remember what the sideline setbacks are for. They're, they're to protect both, both uh properties. Uh, you build a house on it, you can't, you can't be, you can't interfere with any of the sideline setbacks, because uh your neighbor would be certainly able to, you know, have some.
So why, why do we have front setbacks then? Who cares then? If it's on a road, I could do anything on the road. Who cares? It's not gonna impact my neighbor, because there's a road blocking, right?
I can explain that, too. The front setback is fifty feet for safety purposes. So a ten-wheeler triaxle doesn't come down your road and go through your house quite as easily. Even though it's fifty feet, it can still do it. But if you're two feet from the road, it's a safety issue and zoning has to uh, we're concerned about safety.
And, and this regulation, uh, are, are you referring to new construction or things that are existing as not?
No, I'm talking about existing. I.
Okay.
I know the regs for new construction. I don't. I'm just talking about existing, so you're saying if I have a barn that is two feet from the road but a neighbor might be right across the street with a house, because you're talking about old, old school where they didn't have zoning. So the house was probably built right on the road, because they didn't want to shovel snow. If that's the case, then what what's the difference between someone having a barn on the side of their property up against their neighbor's property? I, I, I'm not understanding the variance there, but and, and I'm sorry to take up time for this. This might be something I need to study on my own, so.
No, no, let me just say this about that, uh, about that issue. Uh, what you have is you have two non-conforming buildings. And they've been, they have to be addressed within the concept of this regulation. Is that?
This is also, this is also why we expect, you know, uh, we went to special permit. Um, because then we can look at each uh individual issue.
And the circumstances and.
Circumstance on its own, and then make a determination.
So I guess my under, so then shouldn't all of these requests, whether it's a historic barn, a nonhistoric barn, a conforming, a non-conforming? Shouldn't all of these just be special permit? I don't understand why we're differentiating, because it sounds like they're all kind of falling to the same. I, I don't know. I, I just am not understanding, I guess.
I mean, from where I sit, I think because there is so much confusion concerning the wording of what is requiring a special permit versus not. Um, it's referenced in three, ten, six point three to um that you will need the same things as in section three, ten, seven. But the special permit is not mentioned until the last section, which is three, ten, seven, three. I think it might be helpful to just put that last sentence where it says to exercise this right. Whether it's the entire sentence or just the portion that applies to the special permit. That should probably be referenced in the first line of three, ten, seven. So that it's understood that it applies to that whole section, and also it would tie back into three, ten, six point three. Well, I think, a- as I understand, when I went over this with Gail, that because it says where, it's three, ten, seven. Everything under three, ten, seven applies, so it doesn't need to be stated in the beginning. It, it's one thing to another, they're all connected. So where expansion of non-conforming buildings is allowed in these regulations, the following shall apply. So all of it applies. So that's.
Well, maybe it would be clearer if we put it in the beginning, so that everybody knows when they start reading that section, they understand.
I went over this.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, the, the town attorney went through it. Um, and so this was her suggestion, so I, you know, I've got to assume that she's going to be the expert at it.
I mean, may I, may I make a comment on that?
Sure.
Regardless of, as the word appears in the beginning or the end, uh, the translation that it, that it applies to all of it has to be done by zoning. So when somebody applies, it's a zoning purview to have the approval done on the basis of the written document. Uh, again, as I mentioned earlier, uh this has been referred to us mainly to determine if it fits into our plan of conservation development. And it's, it truly does. And we, we made reference in our conservation uh plan of conservation development to barns, to read that diffuse, to creation of more diversified housing, et cetera, et cetera, so. That all fits into what we have done and what we're trying to, and it also makes reference to the preservation of uh of barns. I mean, we have a whole book out and, and that's, that makes reference to the, the barns in Roxbury. So we are very much geared to that in terms of preservation of barns, and I think I mean, Christine, I, I totally uh understand and agree with the somewhat confusing uh translation that one would come up to by reading this, but I haven't seen one, one regulation, and no, no offense to any attorney. Uh, but I haven't seen, I haven't seen one regulation that doesn't have it's very difficult to translate, unless you are an attorney, unless you know the statute, unless, unless you know all the regulations, and can combine them in your thought process to look at something that's been, you know, been applied here. Um. I mean, my feeling is, and again, you know, the commission has to act on this, you know, my my feeling is that it certainly meets. And complies with and fits into our plan of conservation development. From that perspective, I would recommend to simply respond in the affirmative to. To the change or to the new regulation as it applies to. What what are we calling it?
Basically, nonconforming barns.
Yeah, as it as it applies to regulation.
Or. No, not conformity, no three.
Yeah, nonconforming. Structures.
Barnes.
No, nonconformity in general. It's.
Well, it says the zoning regulation is rescinded and and entirely. And the following is subsequent therefore. Now, what does the, what is three point ten of the zoning relation? What what do we call it? What's the heading of that? Is that for? Regulation for non conformity?
Non conformity.
Regulation for nonconforming building and land?
Non conformity is the title of it.
Okay, so. My recommendation would be, and again. You know, what everyone has said, they were great, great questions and great analysis, and I'm happy how how thoroughly it's been read and and looked at. My my feeling would be that, you know, we would make a motion to respond in the affirmative. To go forward with with this changed zoning regulation. Do I hear any? Do I hear a motion from from one of our esteemed members?
I'll give you a motion to approve the. Nonconformity zoning reg change. As as written. On this letter from James Conway to. To us on August thirt, twenty twenty one. Does that sound good?
That's out. That sounds very precise and it's a great motion. I appreciate it. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Pauline, that was Pauline, right? Okay.
Yep.
Then all I can ask is, all in favor, including Christine.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, not not in favor, but go ahead.
So, okay, so.
I'm not in favor of it.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, so it's, well, that still gives us an approval by the majority of votes present tonight.
I I just want to say that if it's confusing to us. It's going to become be confusing to a lot of other people.
Good luck with the public. Yeah. I agree.
That's all.
And keep in mind, the attorney did this eight months ago, correct? So.
No, the attorney did not do this eight months ago. The one change that we did eight months ago, we didn't include the attorney's. Ideas and we wrote that one ourselves.
That was clearer.
Yes, we can do that, but this one here needed so much legal attentions and state statutes. That we had to go to Gail. And as you can see at the end, it doesn't include its definition of a barn. And we're talking about just barns. So if somebody had a nonconforming garage. This doesn't apply.
Yeah, it's a, you know, it was very eye opening to go through. This piece by piece and to for her to say how outdated and. Inaccurate the regulation was based on current states regulations. So. There's language in here that was required to be there. And there wasn't really anything we could do about that. And so it did make it longer and. You know, we just are going to be hopeful that it is understood. I mean, I. I under I I understand what you're saying. I do.
Jim, you you mentioned that it wouldn't include garages, but I would question on three ten two. It mentions nonconforming uses structures, including buildings. And lots. I would assume that that would include any type of building. Which could be a standing garage.
Jim?
It's stating what nonconforming is is meaning. So. This just states what what this will refer to. And then we are specifically listing the dwelling, the barn, the business commercial and historic barn reuse. So the others are not discussed.
And actually. Does that mean they don't fall into this?
Right.
There's going to be very few nonconforming garages per se as compared to nonconforming barns. Because at the time. People were building garages, the setback regulation was in effect.
Right.
In the time when people were building barns, there were no setbacks.
So and I don't really have an opinion on garages versus barns versus other things. Excuse me. About the under. I'm just saying you you mentioned it doesn't include garages, but again. Three ten two says nonconforming uses structures, including buildings in parentheses. So a structure could be a garage. So if you want to exclude garages. Maybe that should be said because I think we're in in doing this because some of the regulations were a little vague. And if you're going to go through the effort and and make them as detailed, then maybe.
Yeah, I I don't think that was off point. And I was just going to say. That the definition of barn, well, which is at the bottom of this. But that definition is actually broader than it was. So something as Jim said. Something that may be a garage now may have been used. For agricultural use at the time it was built. So the the definition that we're proposing for barn is structures that have been primarily committed to agricultural uses. That doesn't mean now it could have been then. And so, but when you have a building that was built at a certain time. In history that is that close to the road, it is most likely at one point was a barn.
It's a it's a start.
It's a, yeah, it's it's perfect. It is not, but we have to, we've got to start somewhere. And this thing has been, you know, we think about the bits and pieces that we've worked on over the last four years. This is, this is a big undertaking to kind of go through all of it and will it take care of everything?
It puts it all together.
But it does put it together.
Let's keep in mind, once this is fully approved. Amendments to certain sections of text can always can always be done in the future. Now, again, I want to just remind everyone that. Just looking at this, I would say. The situation is better now with this. Information than it was prior to this information. Better now with this new regulation as it was prior to. To this new regulation. So and it also ties in to the plan of conservation development. So from our from our perspective, from planning's perspective. This will go to a public hearing. Am I correct on that, Jim?
Yes, yes.
And and that will, on that basis, it will still go through the entire required process of getting these things approved. So at this point, all we're saying is, are we close enough to say? This meets. And ties into our current plan of conservation development. And if it does not. I'd like to hear somebody tell me that because from what I can see, it does. So to go back to our motion, I would, again, I'm looking for a motion to respond in the affirmative. To accepting the change and the new regulations for.
Non conformity.
Non conformity, really, I'm having a mental block here, but it's not conforming. I think my brain is not.
We already have that, Peter.
Yeah, I know we have the motion, but we opened it up again for discussion. So. So I I think we had, we had, we had a motion, we had a second, and then we had, we had four yeas and one aye. Is that pretty much? Is that how we recorded it?
Yes.
Yes.
You four?
Three, three and one.
Great. Three and one.
It was recorded three and one.
Okay. All right, then that's the way it is. I think the motion is passed.
Very good.
Okay, I appreciate everyone's input. It's really great. And I, you know, and this this was the most enthusiastic and.
Well, it's just it keeps coming up, you know, and I think that just makes us. Wonder why and, you know.
No, I I think that's what we're here for, to ask questions and to make it as good as possible. And I think this is the case that's happening here. It's as good as good as possible in the circumstances at this point in time. And I'm sure future amendments may occur as situations change and as time passes on, passes on. So then what we have left on the agenda is simply a review. Of, I hope the two gentlemen are still present.
Still here, Peter.
Okay, that's good news. So you didn't, you didn't fall asleep nor did you run out of the room. After hearing all this.
It's not usually that exciting.
Actually, that material is consistent with what I've. With the matters that I've reviewed on boards many times.
We're usually done in ten minutes.
My kind of board.
So, so actually. We have Larry Wagner and Michael Felton. Both are highly respected and their background is excellent to be part of. The planning commission. They both requested to to become a member of the planning commission of the vacant position right now that that we have. Let me just again point out now. I don't want to hold anyone up, Jim, I mean, if if you. Unless unless you want to stay and listen to this, you're welcome to it. Kim, the same to you, so.
Thank you all for your time and thank you for your time.
Appreciate your input. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
And we continue to try to work together.
But that's that's been, it's been a great relationship all these years now, working together with all the commissions and that's great. That's good.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
See you guys.
Okay, now to go back to our remaining, perhaps most important part of the of the meeting tonight. Now, keep in mind, we have one position available and we have two individuals that that would like to. Have have expressed interest. Now, Larry was the first one I spoke to and then Michael was the second one. Now, what I would like to do is normally what happens is we have one, one person is interested, we. The individual will simply give us a quick. Statement of why they're interested in, of course, both of these individuals are business people, very, very well. Knowledgeable of of the entire legal process and and what have you. So there's certainly, there's no difference in qualifications. To come to this. And but normally what we would do, we would discuss with one person as to. What they like to do and give a little, get a little background from them, and then we would go in a second session. While that person leaves the room, then we decide yes or no, and then they come back and they're. This whole COVID thing kind of destroyed a lot of that kind of, you know, way of doing it. So what I would recommend is, if you were just, you know, I don't care who's who starts first, Michael, you can or Larry can. Larry came first. So maybe Larry, give us a little background and and see if you're still interested after listening to our our current meeting. So. And we'll take him there. What I would recommend is for the commission to make and announce a final decision as to who we decide to put in that position. Would be announced at the next meeting. So we have that, we have that time period that we normally have to to discuss it and I, you know, it's it's somewhat awkward to to deal with it in this this way. You know, because both of these gentlemen are highly qualified to for that alternate position. Now, what I. Look to just point out to you is. What you would be. Entering into is the. You would be, first of all, planning commission is elected. They're not appointed. And what happens if there is someone. Leaves the planning commission. Then the new person coming in will fill and they're appointed by the planning commission members. That person will simply. Fill out or take the or serve the serving, the remaining term of the person that has has left us. Now. And in this case. The. The member that resigned. Their, let's see. Their their vacant, their term expired on eleven twenty one twenty three. So you would actually fill a. Disposition until. November the twenty first of two thousand twenty three. At which time you would then have to be reelected. You would go on the ballot at that point in November. And then you could, you could be reelected unless somebody runs against you, whatever the case would be. Normally, it's just a formality. You go back on the on the ballot and it goes along with all the other people whose terms have expired and go for reelection. That's pretty much what it is. As a, as a. Alternate member, you certainly are invited to each one of the meetings. You can and you can. You know, join into the discussion process and, you know, express your opinion, but you could not vote. However, would be what we do in the process of our meetings. As we went down this this evening, if we had an alternate present, we simply seat an alternate. To become a member, a full member for that evening. And we kind of rotate, we have three alternates. And five members. So we kind of rotate the seating of alternates to be part of the actual voting process that takes place for anything that's on the agenda. That's pretty much what an alternate does. Now. Changes happen constantly and, you know, if if. You know, if there are other positions available, I know both of these gentlemen, you know, had initially. Thought of being not necessarily on planning, but on some of the perhaps other commissions as well. We are the only ones who currently have a vacancy and as an alternate. So. Long speech. Which simply says that we have two, two very qualified people that would like to. Be on the on the commission. So Larry, why don't you go ahead and just give me, give us a little. A little speech about why and and what's, you know, your interest and whether you're still interested after my speech.
Well, I I never really knew zoning could be so much fun.
I never knew that either.
Actually, it actually is planning.
I think it's a very good presentation. I've been a resident of Roxbury for twenty years, a little over twenty years. And my wife is actually president of the garden club for quite a while. But my profession was essentially dealing with communities in housing and community development. We dealt with things like zoning and planning every day. Over the course of my career, I was responsible for about five hundred million dollars worth of projects. Some some in Roxbury, the senior center renovation. We ran a housing rehabilitation program for lower income people who needed work on their homes. Our projects range from industrial parks around the state to sewer lines, sewage treatment plants. I I you after a while, after that much money, you kind of lose track of what. What all the projects were. But the key part of it is that we were we were all always part of the planning process of a community. We dealt with all the planning commissions, ran through the various levels from zoning to planning, whether they're separate agencies or separate commissions or combined. And we had to be sensitive to the needs of the community and the legislative structure. And it gave us a lot of, gave me a lot of experience. And I've enjoyed it and I've been out of the business world, so to speak, for the last two or three years. And thought this might be a very good way to pay back to the community. And keep involved in something I've done for all my life. I'll leave it at that.
Yes, that's that sounds great. And I I think, like I said before, both the gentlemen are very qualified. Michael, would you like to just take it from there?
First of all, thanks for inviting me tonight. Appreciate it. I thought it was an interesting discussion. My wife Gloria and I have owned our home in Roxbury for a little more than twenty years. Actually, it was August first, two thousand one. And beginning in two thousand ten, when I retired from my law firm, and I'll get to that in a moment. Roxbury became our permanent residence. We share some time between Roxbury and we have a home in Manhattan. However, when the pandemic hit. Roxbury became our full time home with some very limited excursions going into Manhattan. That's changed our view considerably. And so we intend going forward to spend most of our time here in Roxbury. I don't know, Peter, if you circulated my resume at all. If not, I I will briefly go through it.
And I I did not circulate it because that's not the general process. And and what happened, unfortunately. It was sent to Barbara Henry and she then referred to me for for me to call, contact you. But I did see your resume and I assure you, it's, I assure the commission that it's a resume that. But I did see your resume and I assure you, it's, uh, I assure the commission that, uh, it's a resume that, that is next to none.
Well, let, let me briefly, I'll briefly go through it. Um, I re, I retired from my law firm in 2010. The name of the firm is Prescott Rose. It's a large international law firm. At the firm, I created and chaired the Prescott lodging and gaming practice. I also served on the executive committee for two terms. The executive committee is the equivalent of the board of directors of the firm. And I co-chared a very large international corporate practice. My practice consisted of being a M and A lawyer, mergers and acquisitions of every type, representing every client, every type of client. Whether it was a corporate client, finance, private equity, joint venture, I did it all. In the hospitality industry, I represented owners, purchases, developers, finance, in every transaction imaginable from single properties to major transact, major transactions involving hotel chains. Since my retirement from the firm, I've been an arbitrator and a mediator. And I serve on a number of boards, but what, what that reflects for me is every community that I've lived in. Um, it's been important for me to be a contributor to that committee, to that community. My law firm, as I said, um, many different years of, um, involvement in terms of firm management on Long Island. Um, we used to have a home on Long Island. I joined, uh, Northwell Health's board. Uh, if you're not familiar with Northwell Health, it's the largest healthcare, um, system in the state of New York, has 17 hospitals and numerous other healthcare facilities. When we moved to Manhattan, I became a member of our co-op board. And I serve on that board and enjoy all of my board activities. Um, now that Roxbury has become our principal residence, I want to be an active participation, participant in the Roxbury community. Uh, serving as an alternate on the planning commission would be a good way for me to do that. Uh, I do believe that my resume reflects the ability and history of a capable and effective board member. And I very much like the opportunity to serve as an alternate on the planning commission. I have the desire and now I have the time to serve and would look forward to serving on, on the commission. Um, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Any, anyone?
I have a question and this is, I, I'm a former New Yorker, so I just say it like it is. Um, I've been in Roxbury since 2009 myself. Um, I've been on the planning commission for, I don't even know how many years, but we always had vacancies. And it seems that suddenly we're like the, the fun place to be once a month. Peter, what's going on? Why does everybody want to join us?
It must be my, it must be my, my, uh, ability to entertain everyone.
Yeah. So, um, Larry and Michael, I, I just, you know, I wonder, are you able to make the monthly meetings? Are you able to look at Roxbury and recognize that while you may personally want certain changes, um, accept the fact that Roxbury is Roxbury, it's very unique and we all want to, um, protect our community and keep it somewhat the way it has been without glaring changes?
I'll let Larry answer first and then I'll.
Michael's on.
Okay. Um, let me back up a bit. I did not know, growing up in New York, um, living most of my life in New York, I had never heard of Litchfield County. Then one day, um, went up from Long Island on motorcycle to, um, the dairy in Danbury. They used to have something.
Marcus Dairy.
They used to have, they used to have something called Bike Week or Bike, Bike Sunday, right?
Probably ran.
And rode up there and one day we said, gee, you know, we have nothing else to do the rest of the day. Let's see what's north of here. And I found, I feel like that, I found Litchfield County and I fell in love with it. And my wife and I looked around for over a year. We have friends who have homes in Litchfield County. And we were able to share with them their experiences in the county. And for over a year, we looked for a home. And when we found Roxbury, we fell in love with Roxbury. One of the great things about Roxbury to me is nobody drives through Roxbury. You're coming here only because you want to be here. There are no main roads, right? It's a very, very special place. Um, it is that special atmosphere that I really do want to preserve. Now, I understand that there are changes, people change, things change, but the basic ingredients of Roxbury, I want to maintain. I love it here. Uh, as I said, we've changed our views since the pandemic. I'm sure we're not unusual in that respect. Um, and so I want to be very much involved in the community. And one way of doing it, an important way of doing it for me would be the planning commission. Does that answer your question, Dieter?
Yes, no, very, very good. Thank you.
Need to for myself. I was, I was born in Thomasville, Connecticut, not, not too far from here. We built our home in 1999 in Roxbury. I think largely because of the kind of community it is. As Michael said, it's, it's a very small, close to the community. We, uh, my firm did work here. And we did work in most of the communities around here. We, as I said, we were under contract to more than 100 communities around Connecticut over the years. And Roxbury though is very unique. Um, it's a very close community. It's very supportive of its residents. And it's had a great administration for, for many, many years. And I think it's very stable or financially and socially. So I think that, that makes it, uh, very, very positive for me to be on.
I, I just wanted to add one thing. I'm sitting here, uh, near a fireplace and on the mantle of the fireplace, very proudly displayed are our trophies from the tractor parade. Okay. My, my grandkids love this place and we built it in, very specifically to attract our kids and grandkids and they love coming here. And that's, that's an atmosphere that I want to preserve.
Okay. Well, that's good. We want to make sure it doesn't go the way Marcus Darian, the, the Bike Weeks did, you know?
Yeah.
One forever.
Well, we, we have experienced change. I've been here for 25 years. We have experienced changes, but they always were in context to preserving the, uh, natural, basic Roxbury that we all, that's why we came here. That's why we're living here. And, uh, we've been successful in keeping it that way. Uh, you know, there's always going to be, uh, mandates and, uh, regulations coming down the pike from, uh, from, from the state regulators. And there's a big, big drift going on or there's a big direction going on right now of trying to, um, have zoning and planning matters being, um, initiated and, and acted upon on a state level, uh, which hit a fore, we, which, which we would no longer have input on unless we comply with certain regulation. None of that has happened yet, but it's been a drift. It's been a direction that's just been going out. So it's a, it's kind of a little bit of an attack on our current way of doing things and, and, and life that we have here in, uh, in Roxbury. So, you know, we're trying to, you know, rationally, uh, feel with the, the changes that come along. And if they're good for Roxbury, they're, you know, and they're good for the citizens of Roxbury and, uh, they all agree with that it is good. As we have done with our plan of conservation development. It was a long process that we went through with, uh, with, well, our members certainly know what we've gone through. It's been, it's been a very tedious and, and lengthy process that we finally concluded last October. So, but my, to it is that, uh, again, what I would recommend is, I'm, I'm sorry, Larry, is there anything else that you would like, like to add? I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak to you and see you.
Well, it was, it was my pleasure to, to meeting you, but I, I kind of recommend this. And in lieu of having what would normally be an executive session where we make a decision and, uh, and discuss this, uh, uh, I would like to see if, if there is a legal component that I can, you know, deal with our members after the meeting or, or after, after we conclude the meeting and then prior to the next meeting, have the input from the members that we can then announce at the next meeting. Is, is that something that, um, that I could ask you to bear with us on that?
Well, certainly.
Yeah. And, and also keep in mind that whoever's going to be, the person that's going to be on, on the, on the alternate position, uh, this is a constant changing world, obviously. And we will have, there will be resignation in the future, uh, where we bring up alternates and then makes another position available for another alternate. So, uh, right now, if we, if we're doing nothing else, we're creating a bench, uh, for filling the, uh, the positions of, of, of the planning commission. So, and I think we're doing one heck of a job. I mean, I've never experienced, I mean, there's been a time when, when you couldn't find a a willing, uh, individual to serve on the commission with a search warrant, you know, so.
For longest time, right, Peter?
I'm sorry?
For the longest time.
Yeah, it, it was, it was tough. And now all of a sudden, and I also, in, I think it's also an influx of the, um, uh, COVID, I call it the COVID influence. That, uh, where we certainly see, you know, new people coming in, recognizing what's here and moving in and re-expanding, re-expanding our, you know, being noticed by, uh, other parts of Connecticut as being a place to live. So it, it makes it very important that future members, I keep that in mind as to, to maintain our, to the best of our ability, maintain our way of life here in Roxbury. And, uh, and that, that involves, uh, subdivision regulations as we are responsible for. And it also involves, uh, to, um, hear these referrals from the other departments that would potentially affect or before or against the, what we have decided to be in the, what the town has decided to be in the plan of conservation development. So it's a pretty important end step of the process being at the planning commission. And I mean, you know, I'm proud to be here and I, I, our members are just the best. And so it's been a real pleasure to, to do it. And I've been doing it for 10 years now with the, with the planning commission. So it's been a pleasure for me all around.
How many years, Peter?
10.
That's it?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I've been 10 years that I, that I've been chairman. So I think it, I may have been on the commission.
One, one of the amazing things to me and to friends and family who have come here is the fact that it is so unique and yet it's an hour and 45 minutes from New York City. And maintaining that uniqueness to me is critical going forward. Um, and I love the fact that people react that way. I love the fact that our house is two dirt roads from a paved road. It's an important part of Roxbury.
Okay, unless there are any other questions, uh?
I have one more question, actually, of course, Peter. Um, have either or both of you gentlemen had the chance to read the current P O C D?
No, I have not.
How about you, Larry?
I have not read the current one. I, I'm familiar with, from a few years ago when we were doing the senior center.
Let me, let me put it this way, uh, Larry, uh, and, and Michael, our current one is far more user friendly and explains far more than the previous one that, um, as a, we, we don't have, we don't have pages and pages and pages up on, uh, of statistical information that'll, that'll make your, they'll turn your head on fire.
It's the clip notes version.
Yeah, yeah. No, but it, it was, it was a, a good model to have for some other towns who did the same thing. Uh, we, you know, we're very proud of what we accomplished with that. It was done in, in total conjunction with the, uh, the public here in, in Roxbury. Uh, there was, there was nothing that was held, held for different, uh, reasons. It was all out in the open and we've discussed it and it's been, it's been a great process. I mean, we're, we're proud of it. We worked very hard on that and it came out very good. And I must say, it certainly beats the last one. It was the, that we had 10 years ago. We did a much better job. And I think Dieter might agree with that.
Definitely. I thought we did an excellent job, Peter. All of us.
Yes, we did.
It was not easy. No.
Okay. So having said that, what I will do is, uh, you know, after, after I, after we close this meeting tonight, I will contact, um, all the members and, uh, just get some feedback on that. As long as it fits into the regulations of running a, uh, planning commission meeting. I want to be sure I'm not interfering with or violating any kind of existing statute or regulation on that. And I, I'll check with, I'll check with, uh, uh, with, with Barbara Henry and also with, uh, uh, the town clerk's office and just be sure that we don't do anything wrong. Having said that, no matter what, by the next meeting, we will certainly have a decision on, um, who will be, I, you, you're both, you're equally qualified, obviously, and you equally have the desire to be on the commission. So it's going to be a tough one to make a decision. All I can say is that just because one or the other will be on the commission, uh, that, that you will be definitely in the future on the commission or another commission of your, of your choice. So I hope, I hope that's, it has been too awkward for you to be here with having, you having, but, uh, you know, I, again, I'm going to say I do appreciate your interest and I certainly, certainly appreciate your qualification that you bring to the table.
Well, thank you and appreciate the opportunity to participate this evening. Thanks.
Okay, then, then all I would like to do is, uh, adjourn the meeting if I can get a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn, Pauline.
I second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
What, what hap, what happened to, uh, Christine? Did she leave?
I don't know. I thought she was on.
No, I don't think she is. Anyway, but we have, we had a quorum, we have a quorum anyway. So, uh, the meeting has ended again. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I appreciate it and we'll, we'll be in touch, I assure you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Nice meeting, both of you.
Be well.
Is Julie still there?
Done?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes, well, Julie?
I'm still here. It's still recording. Be careful what you say. That's why I, I need to end it.
Okay.
I'm still trying to click my X button to get me out, but I can't. Think I'm gone? Am I gone?
No, you're still there. I still can see you. Okay, you, you're gone, you're gone now. I don't see you now.
Um, I, I suggest you talk to Karen tomorrow about how to do this.
Yeah. Well, that's, 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 that's the point I made just now. Yeah, obviously, you know, somehow, we already talking to Karen today, we already, um, determined that, um, uh, to make the announcement at next meeting would be appropriate. As to whether or not we can discuss and communicate on what our, what our responses are to what these two gentlemen said to us and who we would prefer to be on the commission is something that I would like to do, but it may not be appropriate in that, in the, in the whole context of, of how to approve an alternate. Okay. So we have to decide that, but we certainly can at the next meeting, I can make a motion as to, uh, determine as to who the commission, uh, would would like to, uh, accept in this, in this, for the alternate.
I, I don't know, even if you can have a special meeting before the next meeting. Um, like five minutes before to go into executive session with that one, make your decision, talk about it and then go into a regular meeting.
I think that would probably be a thing to do. We, I would have done this today if it wasn't for the fact that we had, had that zone, that zone change, you know, that kind of ate up a lot of time. So otherwise I would, I would have thought that would be the thing to do.
Are we still public?
Sorry?
You are still public. Yeah. So anybody can still join, which is why I really need to end this.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so.
Very much, everyone for, for being here tonight.
Okay.
I appreciate it. And I'll see you again soon.
Okay.
Okay.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. We'll see you.